I also ordered a regular county meeting on this Monday, August 11th. Twenty twenty five, five thirty P M. Please stand for the place where our flag is in Kansas State. On my feet.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So please, city clerk.
Councilor Beal.
Here.
Councilor Beal.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Potter. Mary, have a form.
I'm entertaining motion to approve the agenda. The fourth time on today's agenda.
Councilor Potter.
Aye.
Councilor Beal.
Aye.
Councilor Beal. Councilor Miller. Aye. Will you carry?
Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent.
You make a motion to approve.
We have a second, love me a second.
Councilor Miller.
Aye.
Councilor Beal.
Aye.
Councilor Beal.
Aye.
Councilor Potter.
Aye.
Will you carry?
Before we start with public input, it is hot in here. Uh, the problem is that we don't usually have this many people show up. So you guys are uh emitting uh some heat that we don't normally have. So the thermostat was turned down. So we've got it or up. More than normal. So we've got it turned down and maybe it will get a little bit through pretty quick. Out of number six, uh on the agenda is public input. We have any citizens that would like to address the city council as a whole, as an individual, but as an entire council. Yes, ma'am. Would you come up and state your name, please?
Hello, Mayor Thompson. My name is Sabrina Ellen Quest. I've lived here for forty years. I know there's a lot and a lot of decisions to be made. I just really pray that you guys take into consideration what the citizens want. I want to stay here. I want to rebuild. I don't want to be dispossessed. Local.
Displaced.
No, I'm already displaced. I don't want my house to be condemned. So please bear in mind that let me rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Williams, did you have? Please state your name and uh.
Excuse me. My name is White Davis. Personally, I have a box. I got, I want to put a thank you. We got stranded in no phone zone halfway through here in Los Angeles. I'm sure a lot of people know where that's at. Uh, we had somebody stop by and really helped us out. I mean, big time. W G. He not only went back to town, he went back the other way and he came back again. So I want to thank you publicly for helping us out. He might say one thing better than you might like to know if you're traveling in the area or any area, I guess. Apparently, we have a nine one one satellite in the sky somewhere because of pilot trouble. It pulled up behind me and told me, said, well, next time just dial nine one one. And I said, my phone don't work. He said, we'll get that. So if you get stranded, you won't have to do that. I hope somebody run miles and miles out there. So thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the city council? This may not.
I've seen it. I just was circling back to see if you guys were aware that they extended the um incinerator protest period for us to request a hearing until September third. So there's been a lot of action going on. It's universal waste systems. I don't know if you guys noticed the compost pile world has expanded tenfold. The wood pile that's next door for universal waste systems is still huge and that's a big fire hazard, even though we've been getting rain like it's still pretty dry and that could be you know, like not. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys were going to request a hearing for the incinerator because it would mean a lot coming from the city council of the down. And you guys all said you guys were against it. So if if you guys requested a hearing, and I know that the but last attorney guy, I don't know if he's gone and stuff, he's had said he had written a letter early on about some information about that. But I think it'd be really good if you guys sent in a request for hearing for me. I'll have on to.
Yeah, anyone else? Yes, Johnny.
Hi. Thanks for having me. Shining Hills.
Yes.
Two oh six Highlands Lane. Um, I know that there's going to be a lot of heated debate and I'm just, I really want to encourage everybody to be still and listen. Because as much as all of us want to keep what we've got, if we don't get some money, we, we're going to be living in a shanty town. So I think we just all need to um listen and be still for a moment and assess the information. And because I know tempers run high around here, I just, I'm just asking everybody to please listen to the options and and let's give it all a shot and think about it. What we get aggressive and ugly and nasty.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tell them about your mom's house.
Well, ours is a total loss.
What they're wanting to do.
Well, in in my case, ours is a total loss. I, I don't see, there's no way to rebuild. We could possibly put a manufactured home and raise it above the flood plain, perhaps. Uh, we have no money to do that with since we can't get flood insurance. So um I, I don't know that it's an option, but I can tell you that I'm going to continue flooding until the racetrack is and and the racetrack plays such a big part in spaghetti flats. And um all we hear is rumor from, from the different um people involved in the racetrack. And I realize that we've got a lot of people involved. And to all of you that don't know it, I mean, the land is owned by one person, the track itself, the business of the track is owned by another person. There is FEMA involved, there's natural guard involved, there's four of engineers involved. So it, you know, there's not like one person we could go to and say, hey, fix this for us. So, so there's a lot involved there. I'm aware there's a lot involved there. Um.
Tell them how much they want to give you for a total house.
Yeah, FEMA's FEMA, the max you can get for a total house is forty three thousand. Okay, that, that's to re- to rebuild your total house. Now, I'm very anxious to hear it's a buyout offers a better option than that because that's not enough. That doesn't frankly, forty three thousand, we need to bulldoze the house and let me do a foundation for a manufactured home. So.
Maybe we can, Shawnee, maybe we can just answer because we do have some insurance thing here.
I heard that and that's why I came and that's why I'm just encouraging everybody to
and really Robert, who Robert kind of does uh really not spoke to address your public input, but since you brought something up, yeah, it makes it really, really tough because of the wildfires and the floods. And now insurance companies won't insure anymore. But my understanding is that if you have attempted to get insurance and cannot get it, that the state of New Mexico will provide some insurance. That just uh I don't even remember.
I've also been told that if we do rebuild, that FEMA will let us have three years of free flood insurance. Yeah. Um, but after that, if we don't continue the insurance, then we're at our own risk. Like they won't help us a second time if they helped us the first time. But again, the max amount would not rebuild my property nor would it rebuild yours, Sabrina. So I just, I'm, I'm really just.
Did you just hear that from somebody? Did you hear that from somebody?
From who?
The information you need to.
No, it's on the FEMA website. I mean, it's, that is not, that is not, you will say that and that isn't standard that's on.
The reason I was wondering, I think there's a lot of.
Oh, of course there is. Just like the race package. And just, I really just because I'm kind of all sides of this situation, I just wanted to because, and I know how heated things get in this little already hot chamber. So I just wanted to encourage people to hear everything out because there's a lot of different angles to this and I think it's going to take some time to process.
Okay, same.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Our attorney is on one waiting to get in. I don't, she said, she said, oh, he was. On Z.
Love to your honor.
I'm, since I'm on the phone via Zoom, maybe it's a on that phone.
That's nice.
Well, maybe we can call her.
Yeah, I was wondering why we go counter because last time I had it was just up there. And uh then I started checking over here and still didn't see her. So let's see what we can find because we do need.
No.
No, this is our attorney.
So before we're done this, so we, we've got a filler here that we fill in. Uh, we have our county commissioner here. Would you introduce yourself, please? And uh.
My name is Tim Prather. I'm county commissioner for district four, which is north of the river. And um I'll let Mark introduce himself.
I'm Mark Fisher, county commissioner for district five. Most of Rito's Downs is covered by me. I'm also the chairman of the commission.
Jason?
I'm Jason Burns. I'm the county manager.
Okay, we filled in uh while we were trying to find our. We said that.
Is it more bulk?
So are we're still not there yet, Ali?
No, the phone's not working.
We should have.
Did you save the bill this morning?
I have a question and a comment regarding the buyouts. Will who decides if it's pre flood appraised value?
If you wait just a second, there's people from FEMA here that's supposed to talk about this.
Yeah, that's on the agenda. So we'll, we'll get.
That way we don't give bad info.
Okay. Public comment?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip a little bit to, to.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, you got one more public comment, but nope, never mind. Sorry, sir.
Mayor, can we get everyone to talking to their microphones? No one back who can hear anything. Then the microphone are off.
And would you come forward if you want to address the city council?
I think that's no.
Thanks, Mr. Martin.
Hello, my name is Josie Parsons and I also live in the spaghetti flats area of High Course Stables. Find a life. We all know what happened and um that catastrophic flood did quite some damage, especially for everybody on the river past the racetrack. Um, and unfortunately lives were lost and um it, it was preventable all the way around um in that regards. Um, before the water reaches us down on this end, we know it is coming. And that's why evacuation orders happen along the river is to my understanding. It does not hit us down here right when it's happening in our hand. And it takes some time to get down to us depending on the force of that, how force, like how quickly it gets to us depends. Um, to the level of the, the, you know, the demolition, we did not know. We did not know the status of this natural disaster. Um, however, when evacuation orders have been issued through my neighborhood, um, we are still allowed back into that neighborhood. So my question is, why were we allowed into those neighborhoods that had mandatory evacuations going on? Some of us were not present and we were not home. So we had no idea. Some of us, a lot of us are elderly down in that area. So they don't have the emergency alert app that we are all being told, download this, download this. Some people don't know how, you know, um. And yes, we all have cell phones these days, but a lot of people just don't know how to work it the best, um, myself included. So my question is, who makes the orders for those evacuations and why are those areas not immediately closed when those happen? Because when that happened and I was totally unaware, an evacuation order went in, I was trapped within twenty minutes of being home. I did not know scale. Obviously, nobody did. Um, but when residents are allowed back in, then I think that's kind of negligent on whoever makes those orders um puts them out. So I just don't want that to happen again in the future. And that's my.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the city council? Still, still nothing on that thing. Okay. Right, that will take us to the council comments. Yes, council.
I'll try and answer some of the questions that's come up uh. The it's not the track's fault that the floods come. They need to do upstream from Rito's Downs into above and up on the reservation. That's where it starts. They have to do the same thing all the way up there with what they've done to the racetrack. They're looking at eighteen million dollars. The only thing it didn't do is wash out the East End. That being said, there's nothing that we can do about it as our little community except get the tail end of the donkey. Want to get our floods. Okay, it's going to happen for the next five or seven years. We're going to have, we're going to have floods. There's nothing to stop it. On the part of going back, going back into your areas of once the river subsides and it's flood and the waters are receding, that's your property, then they, the fire department, the police department, they get word it is dropped. They have people out there all night, the whole time that the flood is actually happening. I know that for a fact. That's not hearsay. I've been there with them. When that happens, they let you back in because it's your property. Okay? Uh, because Lincoln was right there, has looters. When we let her back in, she took care of can't stop you from going to your property. This is why they let you back in now. People that are out, coming back into town and you say, I've got animals down there or I've got children in the house, we usually send a fire individual or a public works individual down there with you to help you get those people evacuated. And that's about the best answer I can give you right now as far as that goes. I hope that kind of smoozes it a little bit.
Um.
If not, I'll make the toast party.
Well, that's not what happened. Um, there were two city workers and they were city because they were in the Rito's Downs truck. And they were letting residents back in after an evacuation order had been placed in the spaghetti flats neighborhood. I personally was not there when that evacuation order happened. So why were people still allowed into that area within, it could have been, I don't know, ten or fifteen minutes that I had missed that evacuation order. I also was not the only one.
I wouldn't have got my parents out alive. They hadn't let me back in.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
The evacuation came down and they let me in to save their lives.
But I didn't even know an evacuation.
I'm just letting you know. I'm just letting you know.
Yeah. Ladies, ladies.
Okay. I still have the floor, okay?
Yes, you do.
And okay, there's mitigating circumstances in everything, okay? And we can't answer everything. I would rather tell you, I don't know, but I'll get an answer for you.
Thank you.
Than to tell you a lie for and you a sack of BS.
And I, I appreciate that. I do.
That's, that, and that's the way most of these counties, in the fact, all the counties will tell you that. We're not going to try to guess at any. The reason you're here, and I'm sure it's because of A, that's on the agenda and it's going to be addressed. We have the county here and we have the people that's going to speak about that here. But the county is a the counties are, is a bit more helpful than a lot of people that think they are. Okay? So with that being said, we still, is our public works director out there?
George Jarvis.
Yes, he is.
He may be hiding. I'm not going to.
We can't hear nothing you're saying out there.
I don't, I just want to ask you, George, we still have outstanding bills that we have not received from FEMA anything yet.
We have not received a dollar from FEMA yet.
Okay, this is, this is, we're, this city is eating that right now. That money's already been spent. We're waiting on FEMA. Now, anytime anytime something comes out, this person says one thing, this person says this one, by the time it gets to the fifth person, it's spread all over town. Everybody gets worried and gets scared. I didn't know anything about this until I got my agenda packet. I read through it. Okay, we'll discuss it with council. This is what we're going to do. Nothing's going to happen until it goes through this council and this governing month. And with the assistance of Lincoln County and the commissioners, you've got, you've got three, you've got the head county manager, so you've got the two commissioners. One from the north side of the river, then one takes out and takes care of us in Rito's Downs, basically on this side. So we have answers here waiting. So rather than me try to guess what they're going to say, we move on with this unless other councils have comments and we find some answers. And you don't have to, I'll tell you this right now, whatever said here tonight, you do not have to sell your property if you want to. No one can force you to do that. The only other thing can is they take, come in, come in and uh, that inland domain or it's, it's, you can't, you know, that's not even a feasible thing. So that's where we stand right now. So I hope I've answered some questions from people. And other than that, I resign.
Counselors, comments? That's our counter.
I just want to thank you everybody for coming. We really appreciate you wanting everything you have to say. And my heart goes out to everybody that lost their home or any kind of damage. I work for a lady in Rito's so that lost everything. She's ninety five. So I know how much this hurts everybody and I'm glad you're here and I hope we all get answers to them. And like Terry Project just said, nobody has to sell their property. You have every right to it. And the things I've read some solutions, but I don't know how fast it will happen. So just let's listen and that's what we're here today for too.
It would be a suggestion that those, the county commissioners or what, any stand up by there so some of the people that are here to comment and stand there and observe more.
We need a bigger room.
Kind of makes sense to me.
Okay, we're, ma'am. We're going to follow the agenda that we have.
One album.
Ma'am. What? We're going to follow the agenda and this is the council's comments. Councilor Beal.
Uh, I don't know if any of y'all is aware of it. We've got a uh we hooked up with the Toys for Tots and over here behind senior citizens in the red building on the, gave toys away on the ninth. We're going to give them away on the thirteenth, the fifteenth. And if we've got anything left over, we'll give the rest of them away on the sixteenth. Anybody's got kids up to the age of fourteen or fifteen, we can. That's a good month. Right down. Yeah, we gave, we gave them away the ninth and then we'll give toys away the thirteenth and the fifteenth. And if there's anything left, we'll give the rest away on sixteenth. I'll be essential.
Thank you, Councilor Loeser. Do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Everyone who's here, thank you for coming. Um, I want to make sure everyone's aware that there's a possibility tomorrow that the water will be off from eight in the morning until five o'clock at night. So I've got to call myself not have an extra water in the house and all of a sudden it's been turned off. So tomorrow we know it's. And did you have a light?
Oh, yeah, so I had a couple people that asked about why the lights are turned off before the, with the ball games. But Julie will probably.
Yeah, it was, they had something went wrong and they had to fix a switch or something.
Okay.
And then somebody got stuck with the needle in the bathroom. So that's my bathroom.
Oh, my.
Yeah. That's right.
And then my last comment is directed to the counselors. Um, the training that I attended this week reminded me that we are supposed to be using parliamentary procedure. And our, uh, one says that we're using those publishers for the parliamentary procedure. And so what that says is you can't start talking about something on the agenda until it's been moved in second. And so I, I have a copy of, of that.
All right, we're not going to do that this meeting. I've got to have, you can't just end something three minutes before the meeting. But if you did, we're going to proceed as we always have. And then I can have a look at that. Maybe we'll, next meeting, we'll be ready to do that if that's what we need to do. To do business. Out of nine. This is going to be the only item. Out of eight, uh Kristen Russo will present an overview of property acquisitions in flood zone areas within the city of Rito's Downs. And I believe it's to that, uh, here she is, to that percentage. Well, also, so uh, it's discussion only, councilors. We won't be taking any action. But uh, we can get some of this information out to the public and to the council. Uh, mayor, police, fire, uh, department. Maybe we'll get some answers. So if you would introduce yourself, please, and uh, it's all yours.
Hi, Mayor. There was a council. Um, I wanted to clarify that today's meeting is simply an overview of the hazard mitigation grant programs in FEMA that is available for the future sports residents. Uh, this program includes various hazard mitigation measures such as proper bios, home renovation, city drainage projects and so we have Kristen Russo from D H S V M is here to provide additional details and she has this communication slot. And it's only a discussion. For information, we're not going to cite anything unless it was wanted.
Well, Mayor, by the way.
Yes, yes, sir.
My name is Steve Gobol, National State Hazard Mitigation Officer and State Fund Coordinator. We actually met last summer. Uh, but D H S M is here, not being so we are representing the state of New Mexico that has a mitigation. And we're here today to talk about mitigation, what, what that program can look like for the city of New Mexico.
All right, thank you very much. So uh, that's good. State of New Mexico. We already feel a little bit.
Well, I will turn it over. Kristen Russo is our lead mitigation expert. We'll all turn it over and then let her give her presentation.
Okay, you said, you said expert.
Yes, she was.
Welcome you everyone. Um, I'm Kristen Russo, D H S M mitigation contractor. So my role is to support the D H S M mitigation unit in spending hazard mitigation dollars through FEMA grant programs. Um, so what I'd like to say today is I'm doing overview of one specific hazard mitigation grant program that becomes available post disaster.
All right, hold it just a second. Uh, can anybody hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, you're, you're very thoughtful. What we need, what we need. Also a lot.
You're speaking.
And if you need to, uh, we'll even let you turn around and talk to so we'll, we'll see. But this.
Okay, we'll start from the top. Um, I'm Kristen Russo, D H S M mitigation contractor. Uh, and.
They still can't hear you. But if you want to stand up and come up here. The guy in the back.
Okay, now what we're going to have to do is across these very self spoken.
Microphones working.
The light is green.
Yeah.
Okay, let's all, let's all be real quiet and listen to the information.
Let me know if I'm still not loud enough. I'm Kristen Russo, D H S M mitigation contractor. So what my role is, is I support the mitigation unit at the state Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. And what that mitigation unit does is they manage several FEMA mitigation grant programs. Um, and the one I'm going to speak about today is called the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It's Um, and the one I'm going to speak about today is called the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It's also known as HMGP. Uh, and that disaster, that, that funding becomes available post disaster, um, like you guys experienced here. So because of that, this funding becomes available. Uh, this funding is available statewide, but we do prioritize the impacted communities to kind of get first dibs on the funding source that that is available. So I think if you could go to the next slide, what would be helpful is to kind of give you guys an overview of the amount of mitigation dollars that is currently available across the state. Um, you see here, DR forty-seven ninety-five.
Can't see him.
Can't see him.
Either one.
Y'all can see him. And we can't see him.
Much better.
No. Okay. So we have currently four open, um, pots of mitigation funding. Um, the largest one is going to be the forty-seven ninety-five disaster, um, at just under seventy million dollars available. And like I said, this is available statewide. Um, so we list here the, the amounts of available funding. The non-federal cost share is going to be a twenty-five percent match that is required. Um, that can be not cash or in kind. Um, and we've also listed here the deadline for submission to FEMA. We can go to the next slide. We can give kind of an overview of hazard mitigation grant program, HMGP. So this fund, uh, is available to states, local. The goal really is to reduce or eliminate the long-term risks to people and property from natural hazards. This is provided post-presidentially declared disasters. Um, and we can fund a wide range of mitigation projects where the key is we're targeting, uh, natural hazards. So that's gonna be your flooding, your wildfire, things like that. One of the key elements of this is that the project has to align with your local mitigation plan. You guys are a part of the Lincoln County Hazard Mitigation Plan that was just recently updated. So it's kind of an easy thing checkbox that you guys have already done as a community. Um, you've accomplished that. Go to the next slide. So, uh, some of the eligibility criteria, I kind, this is kind of repetitive here, um, but really just harping on, it's a natural hazard. Local governments and private nonprofits are available to apply to this funding. Um, the key is you apply through the state. So DHSEM is what we call the recipient of these funds. And then the, uh, city of Ridoza Downs would be the sub-recipient of these funds. We administer the funds down through the state to the local governments. So types of projects that are eligible for this funding, um, we, we give those up into two types of projects, both construction and non-construction. So, um, one of the, the key ones that, um, I'm sure a lot of you are, are having questions about and are interested in are flood mitigation projects. Um, one of the eligible types of activities is going to be a voluntary property acquisition and demolition, uh, where we would voluntarily acquire the property. We would demolish it, restore the site. Um, and then that site would be left open space in perpetuity. We can also elevate homes above, above the base flood elevation as well too. Um, we can also implement stormwater management techniques like, uh, upsizing culverts or retention basins. Wildfire mitigation projects, that's going to be your vegetation management, fuel hazardous fuels reductions, implementing of, um, fire resistant roofing or housing materials. Um, and then of course, post wildfire flooding mitigation, such as erosion controlled and debris basins to prevent sediment flow. Uh, we also can look into energy resilience measures, which is a very popular one. And that is basically a fancy term for backup generators for your critical facilities. Go to the next slide. We also can find non-constructed projects. These are gonna be, um, something that's innovative or non-traditional, um, such as hazard mapping, public awareness campaigns regarding mitigation, early warning systems. Um, we also can find just the design and engineering of drainage projects. If, if the city has a drainage project that they're interested in pursuing, uh, but there is not, um, fully fledged designs completed, we can also pay for the designs of that. Um, mitigation planning, you guys already hazard approved hazard mitigation plan. Uh, so this isn't one you probably would necessarily pursue this time. Um, we can also do H and H modeling, vulnerability assessments, uh, and then, uh, public outreach and education to raise awareness about disaster risks and mitigation strategies. Uh, you can go over the next slide. So, um, if the city has a mitigation project you're interested in submitting and pursuing to the state, um, there are application requirements. And this is something that this, uh, city would help put, go put together. Um, and the state can provide technical assistance in, in putting these elements together. Um, such as a project narrative scope of work, a benefit cost analysis is one of the key features of a FEMA mitigation project. What that means is FEMA provides what they call a BCA toolkit. Um, and you input data into it. And if it spits out a ratio of one point oh or higher, it's cost effective and it's eligible for funding. Um, if it's less than that, um, it is not eligible for this funding source. Um, a detailed project cost estimate is needed as well as maps and supporting documentation and a, a schedule as well too. So, um, that's, that's just the brief overview of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, um, that's available at this time. Uh, the large pot of funding forty-seven ninety-five, uh, deadline to submit to FEMA is December sixteenth of this year. Um, so I think at this point, Janice, I can turn it back to you for any comments or, we are a council.
Those are the, uh, first things. From, um, public citizens who are locked in, ask them, will you?
Uh, I know that FEMA's not gonna help us save because we've already been frying there, but could the state do what they best, like putting all those barricades in with the ground of the deal full of rocks and dirt? Cause they, they, they washed away the second, and it did more damage than it did.
Sure. Are you talking about downstairs to get flats?
Um, yeah, I'm talking about.
So those were all done by NRCS. I'm sorry?
NRCS.
Yeah, and it's a natural resource conference. They, they work with each individual homeowner or property owner to coordinate putting those barriers up.
They didn't do any good.
Sometimes they crack.
Why were they not actually put into the ground? It's six foot. Those barriers are supposed to be put in. Engineering standards, the whole water.
So HESCO barriers aren't, aren't meant to be buried. It's, it's a cloth bag that's filled with sediment and debris or soil. They're not meant to be buried. If they get buried, then they're blocked.
I have a question about perpetuity.
All right.
So forever, those lands that occupy the river that are beautiful lands, so forever would be non-sellable back onto a market or city market. I mean, explain in perpetuity.
Do you mean like if you acquire property and demolish?
You, you, you spoke of that they could be acquired.
Yes, yes.
And that would be for perpetuity.
In perpetuity, yes, perpetuity.
Yes. So forever, they are never gonna be back in the resale market, those.
It has to be deed restricted.
For how long?
Forever.
It's, that's a serious consideration.
Yes.
Yeah.
For those of us that have been offered money from FEMA to repair damage to our property. If you accept that help, is that going to preclude you being um, able to to participate in the buyout program?
Not necessarily. So.
Since buyout programs tend to take years. And it's, it's, you know, we, we are looking at flooding next summer and the summer after that, and possibly another summer before a buyout program, even if it's agreed upon and put into motion, it could take three years or so for it to actually happen and you are leaving your property. You know, so the decisions that I have to make now regarding the offer from FEMA, if I choose not to take that money to repair my home, I have to repay it within the next thirty days. So I wanna know if I accept that money and I go ahead and dive in and make these repairs, is it gonna keep me from being able to be a part of a buyout program later on if we find out that? Well, I mean.
I asked my caseworker that. She told me, no, it doesn't. And she also told me that it will not be subtracted off of said buyout. So I, I really dug into that. I felt free, but I, I did ask my consultant about that question.
Okay. And then when they say, um, pre-disaster market value, is, is that before last year's flood? Because they did devalue our properties after the flooding last year.
And when you say they, do you mean the county assessor?
The county assessor, yes, sir. They came around and inspected the properties in our neighborhood and.
So I think it's important to understand that buyout programs go off fair market value.
Right. Well, and.
Which is, which is not the same as, as a county assessed though.
Yes, but on, on the, the paper that we get from the county assessor, there is a number that is based on, it says it's based on fair market value from the prior year. But I, I'm, I'm just here to learn. I, I'm not trying to.
Your name is ma'am?
I'm Amy Andrews. I live at two eleven North Lane in Spaghetti Flats.
That's the next question. Where are you resident? Did you have a gunner, a listener?
But if I may, Mark Fisher here. Um, there, there are two major programs that oftentimes get conflated. This is a new one frankly, that I didn't, didn't know about till today. The amount of money that's being suggested is really probably very small compared to what we really need going forward. The county has been working with NRCS, which is a federal agency, to try to build up a case to actually make people whole who are actually in the floodway, which many or maybe most of you are. When I mean whole, we are advocating that, I'm choosing my words very carefully because we haven't been approved. But we are advocating that market values prior to our floods last year and fires are used in terms of a voluntary buyout program for selected people who fall within this sort of restricted category of you're, you're gonna get flooded. We kind of know that it's gonna happen. And, and the idea behind that is, is twofold. Primarily to help out those people who don't have a place now, who can't afford to build and need a start to become as much whole as possible, whatever that means. And we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars. We've got, we've got, uh, I don't, you know, I, I, the numbers keep changing. How many structures have been damaged? But it's, it's well into the hundreds and hundreds of homes. So, so, oh, just a moment. So that program requires very much like the one you're presenting, seventy-five percent to be funded by the feds if we can get that money. And we could be talking maybe five hundred million dollars, maybe six hundred. And then twenty-five percent, whatever that total is, and it could be even more than that, will have to be matched. Now, as you know, the county doesn't have that kind of money. But we are working with the governor's office, but more importantly, in my view, legislators, including Harland Vincent Nick Paul, your, you know, your representatives and state senator, to get that match month. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I, I think this program may be an adjunct, and I mean sort of an add-on. We should take advantage of it. The city of Ridoza Downs should take advantage of it. And I would, uh, respectfully recommend that we have Jason, our county manager, work with your team there to figure out how that might best work for you in the village, sorry, the city, excuse me, and, and the county. So we're, we're working together.
The numbers you're speaking of are county numbers, not.
County, no, these are county numbers.
None, all numbers. The dollar amount he's talking about is from the county through the village and into the city.
Yeah, it's, it's the whole thing. Because that's how it has to be presented. The question about this in perpetuity piece, it hurts our hearts to think that if we take advantage of this program, that we're not gonna be able to go back. I, Mark Fisher doesn't have a better answer right now. I can't change mother nature and what's happened with the mismanagement of the fourth. I think you probably heard me talk about this before. Mismanagement, high fuel loads, drought, terrible fires, then we have burn scars. And then we have this uncontrolled flooding, which by the way, the HESCOs were never designed. It was not anticipated. I mean, we had, what was the highest level of, of water we had down there? Uh, Hollywood Bridge.
It was twenty foot higher than the highest mark, which ended up being like sixty thousand feet. It was, it was it was considered like a five hundred year flight.
Yeah.
It wouldn't have stopped.
Unbelievable. Uh, it's not an excuse. I'm telling you, this has exceeded, and I'm no expert, but it's exceeded the expectations. And, and I guess we learned something. You can't fight mother nature. So when we get to the in perpetuity piece, we're saying, do you think it makes sense? If we can make you whole or partially whole or somehow make sure that, that there's the responsibility for these uh, problems are not shouldered by you alone, do you think it makes sense for you to say, hey, uh, I'm gonna rebuild, go on stilts when we end up having this potential problem going forward? I, I, I would suggest to you that you probably would say no. So, so that's, that's part of it, mayor. And, you know, I didn't want to hijack, but I think it's important note that, you know, we talked about buyout programs. We're working on it. We don't have it. It is always, will always be voluntary. Just because you don't engage in it, the dirty little secret is you may not be able to build even on your own land. Is that, do you understand that, 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 the kind of the problems? We're trying to make things right for everybody in the community at large. And we're also looking at the, at the, the racetrack. I know it's a question mark. And, and, you know, we, we, we want it to be there. We want it to work for all of us. But we also want to make sure that it does not cause it problems that we have to deal with down the road. And we know that's kind of a problem.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it all sounds great. I live on Spaghetti Flats. You're gonna hear that tonight. We were deeply affected by the floods and I know that at the federal level, state level, local people have tried helping us since last year.
Right, yes, ma'am.
This second time around, it was devastating. We're displaced. And we're falling through the cracks because we're insured, but we're underinsured because you're capped. So we don't qualify for FEMA. We don't qualify for assistance. We are asked to stand in the back of the lift. But we're still displaced. And we still have a mortgage payment. And we still don't have a loan. And we can't receive charity. We're lost. You know what I mean? So I, I, we are torn between, well, if we rebuild with the little we get from our insurance, because again, we're three digits, I'm sorry, not three, six digits underinsured. We're underinsured by one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for meaning if it's a total loss, we're still in debt of one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Right.
How do you start over with that debt? We're not gonna walk away from debt. In fact, his job wouldn't allow, he has to have perfect credit for what he does.
Right.
So we are expected to make mortgage payments. We're still making mortgage payments.
You're not living there if you can't live there.
No, sir. I mean, our well houses.
Right.
I couldn't find a well expert within five mile radius. I'm talking to Amarillo, Texas, and they came out here to help Amarillo, Texas. So we're in a pretty difficult spot and I've met with so many people. I've met, I've met with Mr. Harland Vincent, wonderful man. We ended up praying together. It's how we depart. Cause this is a God thing. It's so beyond humans can take. I've seen my neighbor here, she might not know me. Hi, we sent a back home to go get. I am witness that you were trapped in your house. I've done that for her parents. And, and, but they came to go her parents. But because we're neighbors and we know that they're elderly, we're not gonna.
Let me, let me, let me try to answer your question this way.
Yeah.
And it gets. And it gets back to my my previous sort of little presentation about. The NRCS voluntary buyout program.
Yeah.
One could imagine that if you were appraised prior to the disasters. At a fair market value or close to it, not assessed value. That's a different deal.
But frankly, that's a percentage of fair market value, which would get you back at a number that was representative.
And we understand that, and and we're trying to figure out what.
Other people need to understand that. Even though that number looks low, it is a percentage of fair market value, so you can still get where you want to be.
So with that in mind, we are trying to understand what that factor would be. Is it one point two? Is it one point five? We we don't exactly know. And then we have to fight. The federal government to get them to come up with the five hundred million dollars that we need for the seventy-five percent. And then we have to fight with the state to get that other piece. But if that thing could happen. It would it would kind of take care of your problem, right? And some so many other problems here. So I may ask you. At some point to actually testify in front of the legislators with your stories. So so that we can get the support, because that's bottom, you have my support, right? You know, and you have. You know, works ten, ten, ten prayters, you have his support and all the committees. We want to make our voices heard. We want to let people know the real human. That's here and the fact that, you know, patience is kind of gone. I mean, it's, you know, it it's not, this didn't happen. So we know that.
I have one more question. How do you determine is it in form of severity? We're in the downs. We are for God. We are ignored to a certain degree and not to say be rude or respectful to anybody here, but I've got to tell you this. I've walked through this for the last several months, and I've written some heated emails. I've tried to stay respectful, but I'm human. And I am tired, and we're getting flooded, and we're we're having loss after loss after loss, and it's not just financial. I'm emotionally, mentally exhausted. But you know what? I wake up the next day and I'm ready to fight it again. I'm not gonna give up. It is my. As humble as it is, we, all I want to say, make crystal clear that we are very grateful for everybody doing their part. I mean, I don't think, I'm not trying to say that somebody here is less than, but I will say that as a whole spaghetti flat. We are at the la- at the end of the line, just like I heard this last week. Veronica, go to the end of the line, you're insured. Veronica, thank you, but you're not. This is. Spaghetti flats is very much at the end of the line, you guys.
But you asked a question about prioritization. If this thing's still very much in the air.
Right.
Yes, this comes through, and we are putting it through on an expedited process. We understand you're hurt. We understand that there's a lot of displaced. Folks like you, and there's not, and it's not just spaghetti flats. You gotta understand, this program is going to cover Upper Canyon all the way down. I saw the draft map today. It starts in Upper Canyon at the reservation, the Muscular Line, and it goes all the way down through Glencoe. And Picacho. So we are identifying all of them. The prioritization is going to be folks that are displaced are first. And it is going to be, that is going to be the top priority of any funding that we hit. That will be the top priority is people that don't have a place to go tonight.
Can we clarify, is the displacement, your house is gone in the river, it's not on the foundation, or is it your house?
If your house is.
It's still there, but literally the the structure.
If you're not livable, it's the same thing.
Okay.
Wash down the river, if it's there leaning on it, if it's displaced and it's damaged beyond livable conditions, that's gonna be our.
Beyond repair. Can that be put and spin right?
Alright, guys. So guys, and understand, and this is something else that a point we kind of wanted to make tonight, and I. I I very much appreciate everything the DHSM comes and does. They're a great help to us. Your four oh four mitigation is really a program for your city to help with your infrastructure. And yes, your buyout program is a part of it. But this is more meant roads, bridges, city infrastructure that they don't apply for. Our buyout program, and yes, this is an option, but it is, it's the long road. And it's also a nice deal of work.
We get city council here that represents us to work. And they're not left behind, and they're getting in real time what the village of Rio de Soto is getting in real time.
The county's taking lead on it. I will say that today. We had a meeting last week. The county's taking lead of this for Paul. City, village, everyone. We are all partners. The mayor and the council, we've already, we're working on other programs, you know. County chairman mentioned your looting program. That's getting ready to kick off as the support of your council. They are not left behind. They are in the loop. We talked with Joey Jarvis and your folks all the time. We are engaged here. You are not left behind. I know that you guys and Spaghetti Fest are one of our top priorities when we come down here and you know the flood's coming. We have guys staged in positions. We promise you not forgotten. So we're we're here. And we're working with our DHSM folks through your city.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
It could, is there, I think most of the body here, except the people that lost everything. Uh, are eaten up by red paint. Uh, you know, I mean, here comes a development to help, but it takes you six years just to read through all the literature, they said.
You know, Joey made a comment earlier. He's still waiting on refund money.
Exactly.
Um, and I don't know, Joey, how much money are you waiting on?
Five million.
I'm waiting on ten. So we're getting there. And our folks in DHSM are helping. Trac's waiting too. I promise.
I heard the governor on her.
They're they're anyway.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure and clarify, thank you, about double dipping. I've heard that phrase a lot. I was told that a lot because I have been to be honest.
To work with our folks at FEMA, we're gonna have to work and see how that plays out. The intent, like the chairman said, is to make you whole.
Right.
So if you got a certain percentage from your insurance, the idea I think behind this program would be to make you whole for your pre-flood bounty. Okay? So yes.
Um, how do we make sure that our property is on the list?
So guys, I'm gonna say we haven't rolled this out yet because we don't, I don't want to roll out something and get your hopes, something might not happen.
Right, but just to make it, because a lot of people are not aware of where we are flooding.
Yes. So which list?
Well.
Yes.
But DHS knows about your problem.
I'm not trying to be ugly. If all these people are in here, they're here for homes.
I understand.
You know, and that's what they need to.
We've gone through getting homes, so and this is another point. Any home that was in the existing FEMA floodplain is included. Along with that, we've had USGS come back in and offer LIDAR that they've got an updated floodplain. Because here's the other thing you need to understand about this flood we got. It didn't stay within the determined floodway. It came so hard, so strong that it developed its own path. So there's a new floodplain. That USGS has come and developed, and we're including those homes too. So we have a home right now. Guys, I want to tell you our home, our list right now is four. Yes, sir, ma'am, sorry.
Okay, I I'll I'll comment. Anything I say sitting up here is a counsel, but I'm a citizen too, okay? I didn't have anything lost, but I fear for those that have. I've seen them, and I've been there. Last year, we had FEMA. They sat down there at the senior center for about a week, sir. We had people coming in, they're not the place to work, do everything, and they never seen another damn person. Not a single one. These people are hurt, pissed off, and upset because they didn't get any help last year. Now then, we're talking about something new coming this year, and we've got the same paperwork, same division they have to work with. That did not help them last year. We don't have no one, and no one in the city is being. Having equipment coming from whoever they hire, from FEMA, DHS, whatever, to come down and move the mud out of the yards. Some of these people are painting for themselves. I haven't seen anyone get.
Does anybody here that's had a long dang.
I saw a track hole are not in a skid steer down your place.
Okay, so that that's all I want to get to call.
I have a question. If you don't doze about that and took thirty-five thousand people from FEMA, I mean. Think about that when you vote.
Public works, and I have talked, we will address that tomorrow. We will look into that and why and why not. Um, I've heard a few comments regarding why that might be. Again, we're here to work with y'all. We will work with Joey, and if there's some way we can get the DHSM folks and their contractors. Down here, we'll make available some of ours to the village, or the, sorry, city.
I mean, I got losses in Catali Canyon. I'm trying to get y'all's help on too, so I gotta move over.
Let me, let me work on that. Guys, we're in the same boat. We're working with FEMA, and DHSM has been great to work with. They really have. They have been helping us. To get what we need, our state folks work with us, our federal folks. It's it's not that they're not trying, but they have their twenty-six levels of red tape we've got to go through. And we are trying to expedite that as much as we can. So it's not just y'all, it's us too. And I can guarantee the commitment from your commissioners that as soon as we get it, we're putting it right back to y'all.
Can we put an online presence where you're a part of it, you're a force, that you're a part of it, and every citizen that wants to join season real time? The progress you're making and being super transparent, the progress.
Yes, and that's, we, I didn't want to raise something out that wasn't right. So we're we're working on, and that's a great idea. We will work on that with an online presence. And check out the county Facebook page. We'll we'll make sure we keep updates on that, yes, ma'am.
So, um, my question is, does this program apply to those people who own a mobile home, but that home is located in a mobile home park?
We're gonna have to work out those details. At some point. You know, I'm laying, that'd be something we work out the details of the program. So guys, I don't want to get into the specifics here. We're still building this thing. So that's why I didn't want to come here and answer a bunch of specific questions. Know we're working for you.
I have a question for Kristen and your program. So I was a big part of a lot of the conversations last year in NRCS. And one of the things that we were told last year is that if your home was removed or gone, you would not qualify for the NRCS. Funds. My question is, is the funds that you are bringing here today, does that rule still apply?
It it's, it can. So yes, um, and I don't want to get into two individual peoples, you know, it's very. Very individual specific. Um, there is different allowances within the HMGP program to allow for any of those. Um, costs that you may have to take pre demolition before award that we could. We capture, but it's very individual specific. So, you know, I think if the city were to pursue this program and and, you know. You were potentially interested, that, you know, that would be a specific conversation. We would need to have a bunch of your property. I just want to get a specific answer, because it's very dependent.
Right.
Um, I know that's not what you guys want to hear. It's it's depends, but that's unfortunately.
My house is a bunch of sticks, and I'm leaving an unsafe house so that I could potentially qualify. When I should be able to document it and remove it because it's not safe. My other question real quick is, is your funds only for primary owners, or what, does it also work for secondary owners?
Just primary.
Just primary.
I was told um by the quality control inspector for FEMA, and since you're here, I think this is great, both the county and the city. That FEMA will provide personnel to help them do their grant paperwork and their. Process if the city or the county were to ask for those representatives to actually um help them with the process.
So so it's clear, it's clear to me that there are a lot of individual. One-off, maybe some things of general interest for everybody. But it's clear to me that we haven't done the job that we need to do. And communicating to you where the resources are and who you can talk to to get action. So I commit to you that we will do that at the county level and work again with the city. To make sure we're on the same page, and you have that help. I I could have answered a couple of these questions. I think I know what I know, but then again, I could be wrong. Uh, for you, you you said you said that you didn't know how to make make sure you had indicated interest. Well, we have this wonderful lady here, Miss Laura Doth, and she will take your information, and you can fill out some paperwork. And you will at least be considered, right? You'll be considered.
I will. Everybody in Lincoln County, it seems, has my number, but I will give it to you all.
And so.
And and at this point, because the program is not live. What I am doing currently is just taking down all of your information, and that's basically name, address, telephone number, and email. Um, and then when we get to the point where the program is rolling out, we will. Number one, we'll make public announcements, but number two, I will send emails to everyone and say, here's the form. The beautiful part about NRCS, DHSM, love you guys, but it's a twelve-page application. NRCS is one page, but here's your interest. So my number is five seven five.
Right now.
Nine three seven two five two five. That is one of the things that we have been working on this whole entire time is, if we absolutely understand. The other agencies revolve people in and out all of the time. I live here, I've been here thirty-six years. So call me and just say, hey, I am uh interested. If I don't pick up your call. Trust me, my phone rings all day long, but if you leave me a message, I will call you back. Um, and so that's where we are right now with this buyout program is we are absolutely. Accepting anybody who says, hey, I want to be involved. And um. Absolutely, it is for not just primary on NRCS. It is people who have second homes as well. Of one of the things that is really nice about this program is for our folks who are in trailer parks. Because we have to deal with the property owners. But if we get the property owners involved, and they ascertain that, yes, we need to move. Places, this program will pay to relocate you. And be able to, once you find a place to go, this program will pay for that relocation. So it's got a lot of great things with it. Uh, like Commissioner Fisher said, we are. Doing our best to secure that twenty-five percent match. That's what it hinges on. We have even petitioned Washington to maybe reduce that match to ten percent so we can afford to do it. Um, granted, they've got a lot on their plates right now with everything that happened in Texas, with everything that's going on here in New Mexico. Um, but they they know who we are, so it's. We are hopeful. We are absolutely. I have been working on securing this match for almost a year.
Laura, how can we get you there?
Yeah, what can we do at all?
Um, I think what Commissioner Fisher said, that if we have a special session. We definitely have already talked to our legislators that we want to put this on the agenda for the special session. If the governor does not hold a special session, then we have to wait till January, but absolutely. We want to hear from the constituents. They want, they need to hear from you guys saying this is an important. Program for us.
Can we put letters in?
Yeah, congressional, so the you've got the state level, right? That's that match we've been talking about. We're gonna need your help there. But we really need that big money, the seventy-five percent. And that, you know who you're talking about there? You're talking about uh Heinrich. Right? We're talking about Mulan, right? We're talking about this Vasquez.
Anyone in New Mexico.
Yeah, all your your federal representative senators, the two senators that we have, right? Dan Sperry, sorry. Um, these are the people that can affect. What's going on in the legislation at the federal level. That's where we need the big money. And if we got the big money. Then I think it would be a whole day in hell, sorry, Mr. Mayor, that we wouldn't get. Uh, most of what we needed for that match from the state. It just it just had to happen.
You said yourself, the track, big question mark. That was, I think, your word, big question mark about the racetrack.
Something that I know to be true is that the the racetrack was given the money, and this is FEMA procedure, correct me if I'm wrong in front of all these people. Um, to build it back to the way it was. Well, the way it was was never gonna handle. What happened after the fire and and.
Funny to speak to that.
So um, I feel like there is a huge amount, of course, the option to build it better.
So, um, I feel like there is a huge amount, of course, the option to build it better was on both Trotter and the owners of the property, which are two different people. So, you know, there was a whole lot at play there. But I can tell you that my baskets are dry as a bone because the water wasn't in the river. It didn't make it to the river. It came from the front, from the racetrack. And so all of you people here that are spaghetti flats, I just wonder, um, and, and I don't know an answer, but you did say it was a big question mark? And I would just, I would just implore everybody to think about the big question mark.
Well, the question mark, question mark is, uh, there were quite a lot of us who, who looked at what we thought was the problem and what the state and FEMA decided was gonna be the answer. And we thought the answer was wholly inadequate. Um, and in addition to that, you saw a flood that frankly, nobody actually thought would happen.
Are we up for the, for the, you got flow?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the lady in the black shirt, the first one, what was her name, please?
It's Laura. Look, and last name is Doth. He is David, over to you for Palm Beach.
And what program are you in?
Um, I'm working with the county and NRCS, but I'm with the South Central Mountain Resource Conservation and Development Council, which is an organization who's actually been working in local counties since nineteen sixty-seven. You just don't hear much about us because we handle a lot of thinning projects and those grants with New Mexico Forestry Division. Since we are a nonprofit, we're able to assist the county in, um, some of their tasks. And one of these is, I'm the liaison between Republic and the county and NRCS. So like I said, my phone's open all the time. Add some more numbers, guys, call me and do that. So thank you.
Okay, we're kind of, kind of going, we're repeating ourselves now. We get to that point. I think it's, uh, uh, we still got a part of it left on the agenda. Let's take a break. Uh, some of you still need some more questions answered. We'll come back to, let's take a, a break and come back at, uh, five till seven. Don't treat that one.
Yes. Are you, what?
Thank you, Joey. Yeah, close. Sir, you want to come in? Okay, we'll call the, uh, council meeting back and order before we, uh, proceed with Adam B. He's what I'd like for the council to do. I've been there and done that. Councilwoman, I've actually been, we've been there and done that a lot of times, sir. Uh, twice on the city council, total eight years. Been mayor, so what I would like the council to, somebody that talent yet been there and done that. Somebody gonna be running for, for office, uh, in the November election. I'd like for the council to select a voting delegate and alternate. Uh, and, and, uh, someone besides the mayor.
Point of order, Mayor, what's happening with this?
Thank you, pardon.
That topic has not been opened for discussion yet. So, would you like me to open it?
Uh, open it. That, that was just for your information.
Oh, I knew that we were open for discussion, possible action. Uh, naming the, uh, voting delegate and alternate voting delegate for next month's July twenty twenty five removal conference. I'm in motion.
We're still discussing it.
Now, now we're discussing. Am I?
Okay, for the record, I would be, uh, I've been there and done that on a lot of things that have helped do the city government. And so I'd like the council to select someone besides the mayor, which is kind of been traditional. Let's, uh, let's hope it changes in that. So we'll go ahead and select a voting delegate and an alternate. It has to be something that's going to attend the annual convention, which will be easy. It's, it's gonna be Senator Olson this year, so don't even have to travel. Yes, then.
Nominate Mayor Pacheco as voting delegate and Councilor Proctor as.
We have, yes.
Is the deputy general gonna give him?
Of course.
It's here currently.
Well, I didn't. Yeah. I think there's a question to put in.
Okay, we have nominations.
All second.
You get a motion?
We have a motion at the beginning, so now we've discussed it. So are we ready to close the discussion? I know that we closed the discussion and.
But the promotion was motion to discuss and upon clash, it must be a moment to.
So, all of them ready, approved. Uh, Mayor Pacheco as a voting delegate and Councilor Cherry Proctor as an alternate voting delegate. Now, sir.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Baker. Councilor Proctor. Councilor Miller. Councilor Baker. What figure?
Good, good, good selection, uh, councilwoman. Okay, that will take us then to item C. In the new list, which is personnel recommendation to hire Edward Anderson as a community service officer for the police department. Uh, deputy chief, are you going to present that?
Yes, Mayor, whoever's in council, if she's said, I'm angry with the police. Mr. Anderson, if you'll come up with, since Edward Anderson, he's applied before. Uh, he's applied to be a service officer, he's got some experience with us. He does have experience in communication with the public from, uh, in the mountain god, where he's a supervising security officer.
Yes, that's right.
Um, so he's supervising. He does wish to become a police officer eventually, like be a steward or any sort of a senior. We're always a, I mean, there's a certain serving. And I think the, the CSO position would be a perfect spot for me to start. We asked for your approval and strange and, and very.
Mr. Anderson, um, are you already working full-time?
Yes, I am. I'm working at the end of the mountain god, still currently as the, uh, security supervisor from the nation.
And you would give up a good job like that to make nineteen dollars a year?
Uh, absolutely, ma'am. Unfortunately, uh, with, with things available, the, the last couple of years that we've been here, we've been about three years now. With my wife and, uh, our children. Um, one thing that I have noticed since living here is that the way this really kind of comes together during, uh, marriage. Um, we weren't directly impacted by the fire or by the floods themselves as we moved, you know, a little bit out of reach. Uh, I remember we were in the evacuation area, which we were forced to, unfortunately, for a reason. And we, we, we used our funds on both ends, but for life and. Um, we, uh, unfortunately, we're not really cut off on that great. However, the support that you gave from the community is something that kind of shaped me to want to present myself in a way as well. Um, I come from a background that is not originally on a public life. I am, uh, born and raised in California, not for the next part side of the population. However, seeing the way that everybody I can deal with, something with that energy before my life. And it was something that inspired me, especially something kind of a quality.
This position is two parts. One of it is communal, so we'll, um, on the hosting, and then there's a special training. And then the other one is now we'll consult another, again, in a special training. Are you willing and able to go to the same house?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Yeah, that's the one I believe there will be right, so.
Not for Proctor.
Okay, this is for the chief in the DC. You get him on board, we proved one way back here. A bunch said nothing. Nobody knew nothing. And all of a sudden, one place you fall. It's a little small, happy issue on my end here.
In all honesty, with, with any luck and a lot more communication, I would like to see, want to be in the home. I would like to see that where everybody, if there are community service officer positions are perfect for workers. They get their foot in the door, they still learn about, they can make a determination for themselves. If they want to determine who will patrol position.
So we, we, we send him to the school for the animal control, you know, how to handle the animals and stuff like that right there. Year and a half, two years down the road, you go to the city.
He needs to do that.
Uh.
He needs to do that right.
Well, I'm good. He's whatever, whatever it is, when he gets the two schools down, okay, I've changed that, when he gets the schools down. Then in Europe, gets all the schools down, he jumps over to your side, the police, they better start all over again, it's gonna say as well.
Absolutely. However, he can still use those same skills as a patrol. That's all my patrol members who handle helmet and phone calls. If our other CSO is tied up with something, it gives them the experience and the knowledge to enforce different laws, not just kind of making criminal laws. They can now enforce our code enforcement, they can enforce several. For a small agency, for no reason, they can be holding each other, be a toll for a CSO.
Mayor, I do agree. I think that helps than the, they. Going, going unfortunate, they learn to be more notice. I think it's just a step. More information, they're all. But training.
Yes, uh, yeah, I got a big problem.
Cause we just sent two people off to get them okay, and they both flunked out. Now we're putting them through another school. That's the problem I have, and them other two couldn't make the deal. How do y'all think these guys think?
So nobody flunked, where that information was, well, nobody flunked either. There you have to do physical fitness tests, or something in my office, or something.
No, I'm talking about Santa Fe, one of them was Santa.
Yeah.
Flunked out of Santa.
No, one of them passed, the other one missed his test, he's got one test.
Okay, that's flunked. I don't care how you put it, that's flunked.
Santa Fe.
One made it, you jerk him out.
Right, and send them both to Hobbs.
So we're sending them to another school, that's costing more money.
No. It's not costing us a dime.
Oh, my God, y'all found the money, chief. Where'd it come from?
The state of New Mexico scholarship. The, uh, fast flow.
That stuff is all paid for by taxpayer money.
Correct, but it's not coming out of our budget.
It's coming out of somebody's budget.
They're getting money from the federal pilgrims for the fast food program. And they're getting money through, they offered, but we missed the offer.
This is, we're fixing eggs in this fashion, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
We're fixing eggs in this fashion, just adding, putting in for the CSO. And for the, the other, the last one. The other one is coming up for, for the police. Yeah, but we done this exact same thing the last, I just thought I mentioned that a while ago.
Yeah, we didn't need any writing that, once we train somebody as a community service officer, that they'll do that job for a year.
Counselor. I'm, I'm kind of guessing, but this is not legal. Do we have our attorney?
Yes.
Uh, would you state that again, please, so the attorney can give us a ruling on that? I don't think that's legal.
Yeah, somebody that's standing ready.
When he first came in. Ms. Winter, can you all hear this?
I can, I can hardly hear whoever asked that question.
Councilwoman asked that question. I know that we can do an agreement that if we send a police officer to officer training school, that we can ask them to repay, repay part of the program based on a contract that we set up with them. If they leave or, if they leave this city. But what I'm asking you is if we hire a person to be our, uh, community service officer and send him to training, and which will also include animal control, can we have some kind of assurance that he won't be moved out of that, from, out of that position for a certain timeframe?
So a lot of jurisdictions, I think, I'll, um, Mr. Mayor, councilwoman, um, a lot of jurisdictions are putting officers through training school and then requiring that they sign a contract to, to reimburse for that. And part of that contract usually includes staying with the city for a certain period of time. Just to make it. To make that, is it legal?
To, to make a contract with them if we put them through school?
Absolutely. It's, it's done all over the state.
All right, let me ask a question. And, uh, Councilor Proctor and I were in total agreement on what I guess used to be. Now that the question is in enforceable. If they just don't do it. And I think that's what could happen.
Was that a question for me, Mayor?
No.
Okay, can you repeat it? I'm still having a hard time. I can hear better on the phone than I can on the Zoom. I apologize.
If Councilor Proctor and I are dealing with what apparently used to be, uh, the non-legality of this. It just simply, uh, was not legal. It, it, uh, you couldn't go there. But now we're hearing, uh, that apparently there's been new legislation. Okay, so if a person signs a commitment agreement, then if they just don't do it and leave, uh, what's gonna keep that?
What's the recourse?
Yes, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, the recourse, um, Mr. Mayor, is, um, what I'm also doing in other jurisdictions, which is legally pursuing those individuals that have reneged on their contract. Um, so, um, I've actually unfortunately had to sue two police officers up in Aztec, New Mexico recently. Um, when they jumped ship a little early and went over to Rio Reba County as a sheriff. So, um, one of those is in active litigation. The other has resulted in a judgment against the police officer and his wages are being garnished currently.
Councilor Baker.
Yes, Winter, how, how many, like, give us a idea on what the contract should be, two years, three years?
Oof. Um. In, um, Mr. Mayor, counselor, I mean, it's up to the, it's, it's up to each jurisdiction because it kind of depends on the cost of that, of that, right? I mean, um, you know, if it's something that, um, I'm trying to remember what the Aztec officers were. I think they had to stay there three years. Um, other, some jurisdictions are also doing it for electrical linemen in cities that have, I mean, um, electric utilities where they pay to have these men, these men get their journeyman license. Um, I think I've been seeing to at least a, a minimum of two years, and, um, the last one I noticed was probably three.
So we would need to put that on the agenda for the councilors to decide the length of, uh, term. And that, that this would, uh, entail. Uh, and I'll have something else for it.
Ms. Winter, can you make us a, uh, some kind of a contract?
Um, sure, I can, I can definitely take a look at what's out there. I would also like to know why you think it's not legal, because we probably need to understand what happened there, too.
Okay. Uh, yes, sir, yeah, uh, remember that, Councilor Proctor, uh, last, last year, when I first came aboard, we were discussing this. And the, uh, officer that we had at that time, that would be deputy chief, instructed us that we could not, and then a former chief of police, I don't know if he's still here or not. It, it instructed me that the contract was illegal, uh, under the law. Now, I might have misunderstood that because at one time I thought we had to pay, the city had to pay for them going to school. Santa Fe is free. Uh, right now, we have two officers that have gotten a grant from New Mexico Scholarship to go to the op school. So that grant was given to them. That was out of our hands. So if we pay nothing, then we can't hold our feet to the fire, take any money back. So that's what I'm understanding here. Well, we can still give a contract for, say, two to three years. If they've reached that contract, whatever it might cost or however, uh, I, I don't know what, um, about contracts when it comes to the law like that. But we'd have to look at what's the repercussions that he's gonna have to pay back for the finance. What's the repercussions that he's gonna have to pay back for the finance difficulties that we go through? Getting another police officer on board. Is that the way we need to look at it?
Very.
That's a question, ma'am, if you if you called it off.
I think so, um, Mayor, Counselor. I think, um. I mean, I don't know what Santa Fe's arrangement is, but, you know, we have an associate that works up in Santa Fe, so we can check on that. Um. If you make that investment, and depending on the investment. You would want to keep them from for some period of time to allow you to recoup that investment. Um. Again, I'm not familiar with what the cost of. Um, you know, police academy training might be. Um. You know, so, you know, some jurisdictions will cover the cost of that, some won't, but then they require certain, you know, a contractual arrangement to stay. Um. I mean, it 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 could be tailored any way you want it to be tailored, I think. Um, and then, you know, I do know that it's difficult to. Um, keep and retain law enforcement, especially in the rural parts of the state. I I know Tulareosa is struggling with the same thing currently, and I know they're down by you. Um, so I, you know, I think you have to keep your ear to the ground, listen to your officers. Uh, pay attention to what's happening in other jurisdiction and make your decision accordingly.
At this time, uh. Uh, when we, it cost the city basically nothing to actually send them to a police academy. Santa Fe is a gratuitous, they that it doesn't cost us anything. And the two individuals that did apply for a scholarship through the New Mexico State Scholarship. They got that scholarship and it's costing out of their pocket of that scholarship that they received, twenty one hundred and fifty dollars. Go to the school in Hobbs. And they 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 get to keep the rest of the money to add to their uniforms or or whatever. So. I'm I'm finished now.
Couple of questions, y'all, if I, let's see. I forget, but don't go, go hundreds now. Uh. I have a question for the counselors to consider, uh, when when going through this process. One question is, is this going to discourage? People from applying if you have that on you? But then the other thing is, if they don't agree to this.
It works anyway.
Are you sure he's on one anyway? If they, so. Uh, that's, uh, something y'all might think about. And definitely.
This winter, I've attended several events this year, twenty twenty five, and discussed this with other police departments around the state. And what the mayor and probably Councilor Proctor were talking about was a few years ago, we hired. Uh, an officer to be our K and O officer, and and then he had a three-year commitment to stay with us, and he didn't. He left early. We were told that we couldn't force him to stay because he's not an indentured servant. I think that's the one. But the situation that I'm talking about is if the city is out money. From training and uniforms by an officer who doesn't stay, if the contract be specifically monetarily related. That if they leave, they pay back a portion of what we lost. Not, it's not a time contract, it's a money contract.
Say that last couple of sentences again, Counselor.
Any kind of a contract that I've heard of with officers in other cities in the state. Was related to the money. The money the city spent was being recouped if they left, if they left early. The contract has nothing to do with a time commitment.
I think what you're saying, uh, Mayor, Counselor, is that you are aware of such contracts for police officers.
I am.
Okay, and I am as well. Um. So I'm, I'm, and what's the question related to that?
It's just a comment that.
Ah, okay. Sorry about that. My apologies.
But would it be fair, um, Ms. Winter, would it be fair if we hired a code enforcement officer? And required that as a minimum one-year step before they can move within the department to police officer?
Uh, Counselor, uh, Mayor, if, um. I mean, you can set any requirement I think you want. Um, again. It's, I know it's difficult to keep and retain officers down there, so you have to be mindful of. What it is that will. Keep them there. If your contract requirements become so onerous. That they're going to, you know, jump. Someplace else because there's a better contract offer, better pay, better time off. Uh, training is covered, insurance is covered. Um, it's highly competitive in the rural parts of the state. So I think you just have to be, I mean, you can put anything in this contract you want. Um. But, you know, keep in mind that, um. I mean, they could breach it, in which case then you have me going after them. Um, but you don't want to keep, you don't want to have something so onerous that the officer is disinclined to stay.
That's something that that I'm I'm thinking right now. I think counselors. Are gonna need to consider, first of all. Are you still gonna want to apply? But. Second part of this is. He doesn't know what kind of penalty those guys are gonna, were gonna hammer him with.
That's why she's saying that there shouldn't be a whole lot of stuff in there, just, you know, when you pay back money, you know, you're good.
A general statement.
Yeah, just, yeah, something that's, yeah, you you get into too many hours, I mean, I tell you. I think that's something we can, that we can put on the agenda and discuss about later in the day, if I know what's going on. Again, those time to think about.
That way she can write the contract.
Bring up the contract, don't have a pain to that. That seems very tight. Very well do that, and that's fine, just that whole time we decide to do something like that. Still, we won't make a boat skin.
The lead time is looking for the one. And they need all rights. For our city. Our city. And. Right now. The contracts, what is the cost of it? Concerns?
Right now, they're. Pushing the top of this.
And that's for the ends of the world we just got. No, I'm talking about he's or deny.
For the CSO physician?
Yeah.
Still waiting to hear back from the contacts that are responsible or the staff along for the training. I do believe the training was provided by the state. On the county phone enforcement.
Well, yes, that may be a little bit.
No, I'm not sure. He wanted that it's provided. I know it's available, and I haven't done it.
So as far as cost of training, it's going to be. The cost of the uniforms and salary. And school training, I'll talk to him.
And we're down for one. So he's needed.
So you're gonna have four rookies running around here to send them cops. And three cops.
No. Wait, he's part of CSO.
So was the other one stood in that place.
Right.
Yeah.
And this still?
I just, I I don't, I don't trust y'all leaving them.
So he's before he goes to full size, it's not that passes physical.
I know, but that other guy, he said, stood up there and told us the same stuff, and he was down in two weeks.
The city policy. The current city policy will help for enter the vulnerable.
And we don't need somebody else over. We need somebody in the. Being as easy, and y'all is gonna get him in there, we're gonna pay for him to take the training, y'all gonna jerk him right back over there.
We're getting training, maybe the whole of that. For control and CSO.
I hear what you're saying. So, contract.
All of that, he's needed. He'll come up with a contract.
So you wanna nurse him, anything, get him.
If he wants it.
Yeah, that way.
I'll see how we can not die on it, indeed.
Unless, guys, unless you wanna go ahead with the way we've always done it. And offering them this kind of thing, and then, uh, y'all decide for future applicants. What you want to do with the empty asset. But we will, we wouldn't be doing anything that's about done. You're saying, yeah, that's caused us a problem. To do it that way, but, uh, he's here. I think in order to be fair.
But he's still, he's got full-time jobs, and it ain't gonna hurt to know two weeks till we get our stuff. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Are you okay with that? Waiting? Whatever.
We just need time to do the contract, guy, and and figure it out. It's it's nothing against you.
No.
It's just the way this thing's going. It's how it kinda got slipped up on us.
Is all, is all the council in agreement on this, or? Just.
If he agrees with it, I think we should.
I make a motion to postpone this until the next meeting. Second.
Well, oh.
Counselor Nacebuck?
Aye.
Counselor Baker?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Miller?
Aye.
Counselor Proctor?
Yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for applying, uh, with the city. I don't think that you're regretting.
And just, this question has nothing to do with your personality at all.
Oh, without you at all.
Nothing at all. May not misunderstand that. Something's wrong over there.
We've been a stepping stone for a long time.
Give him time to get it worked out, and so up to the next meeting, which will be the end of the month. Yeah. Things, I mean, I don't see an issue with it. You look like Sumo Racer. I'm assuming.
That's a little pit bull. Okay, then we're gonna say you are getting next council meetings up.
When the council, we then we put on the agenda by.
Twenty bit. So this is, yes. Mayor, would we do a workshop? To determine this kind of stuff, like. Policy on how long the CSO has to be in position before he can take a police officer. Position.
Yeah, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. Let's. Let's go ahead and finish this out, and then, uh, whatever council wants to do on that.
As her question right quick, ma'am, we did vote on, we canceled it out, having it like we did have it. Be put it in, then we can have a council meeting due to the end on the same day, council meeting.
Well, I think.
News calling, same time call, get the council meeting, the generals calling.
Were they every other?
I went to the beginning, one of a month, the first meeting of a month will work off.
Yes, I, yes, we can call it, but it's all of the council. Are you speaking for all of the council or just two?
I'll say that looking for going to have a workshop, we have have one getting in a month. Will be last meeting of that month to be put on the agenda.
Well, we could gonna try to tackle this before the gentleman comes back. Maybe a workshop could be more time if we do it on the work.
I don't think we need to open, this is a, we're just a.
I understand to decide. I know, I just wanted to let you know that somebody texted me that they've been commenting in the Zoom and they're like that. I'm giving them two, sorry.
Even if they were sitting in the room, they couldn't comment, just like.
No, they've been trying since August. Yes.
Uh, I think you have to.
Somebody.
You hope you had a person, you can't just text, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, we took, took both. Yes, we're ready to go to the next item.
Yes.
All right, item D. Is, uh. Personnel recommendation. Uh, hire Andrew Jimenez as a. Uncertified. Police officer for the police department. Hey, Deputy Chief, helpful.
Mayor, members, council, you wanna start this one out a little different, years of, by far, police officer. But we're in a really good spot. We're interviewing another certified officer on this day. Uh, we have two in the academy now, and so far we've created three. We'll work twenty-eight hours now. Really hopeful. Uh, Mr. Jimenez passed his physical fitness, first time I'm out. He could be really, really well. He's young, energetic, that's why I like, okay. Um, he's a local, local kid, graduated in twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen from Rio de Janeiro. I have nothing to report to you. Um, I think you'll get very good at us, that we have, we're in a position where I was explaining to him. You know, fielded training, we will move myself, Officer Walz, hopefully we can make a sort of a certified officer, right? Uh, we have a process, it's police. Training them, so they'll get the academy and not be saying they couldn't. You're saying on our physical fitness test, so they pass the course tonight. Now, this, this working notes. We have your, I will, I will kind of, I can't put your name, one instead of. Right here, I'm gonna let Mr. Jimenez introduce himself and chat out a question.
My name is Andrew. Twenty-five years old. I've lived in Rio de Janeiro for the last fifteen years. It's been one of my dream goals to be a police officer. Uh, it took me having an honor to finally pursue it, but can't tell her to pursue a dream if I can't pursue my own. And so far it's worked out pretty good, and I can proceed with it. And get it, help out as we want to.
Okay, counselors, Councilor Proctor.
Where's the next school start?
The Mega Point Hobbs will be in January.
Next one anywhere.
Next one anywhere, there's no telling because they're not putting out schedules like they should.
Okay, when will be made with those school?
Uh, the soonest, January.
January, so you want now, just not respect on your circle, there's some stamp off things to say. So you want us to pay nineteen thousand dollars in wages between now and when he can go to school? Then we lose him for four months, or three and a half, whatever, obvious. Before we get him back. Now then, when these guys come back that's in school now, by both of them graduate, who's a certified FTO?
There will still be myself, Officer Walz, and hopefully the government, everybody wants to, he's alive, he's a certified FTO.
He is certified. Okay, I'm getting at, he's on thirty days FTOs. Okay, where where do you say no coming from that your FTOs not?
Anywhere in the United States, a thirty-day FTO is not enough. It ain't even close to what these, the minimum steps. The, um, the two programs that are due is pretty much nationwide, San Jose, California, and Arizona. And there are, you know, three weeks of phases, there's three phases, and that's mental. If you need to spend it, they can shorten, but thirty days is no more than close to be enough.
Okay, so what you're saying then, that they're they're gonna be in the field, riding in a vehicle, just like they are now, or was?
Don't you certify or Mr. Jimenez?
No. The people that you got in school right now, when they get out of school and come back down here, they're a police officer.
They're still gonna be on.
FTO for those three phases of three weeks each.
No, there's just gonna be modified to get them out of the academy setting, back into the street setting if that one again. And that can vary from thirty days to ten days.
Say, when you say ten days? No, that's like taking a raw recruit. With eight weeks basic training. It'd work on eight weeks to sixteen weeks combat skill training. Put him in a suit, send him to war, put him out there and say, go get him. They don't do that.
That's, well, we, even New Mexico.
Well, we don't, not in the city, we're not staffed, we don't, I'm not a counselor.
No, no, what happens though? Is a lot of these agencies are gonna send them to the academy with little FTO bare minimum. And when they get certified, they're gonna kick them, they're gonna ship out themselves, and that's where they get the problem. What we're going to do is when they graduate, they're gonna come back on FTO. And it can be anywhere from that ten days, if they're doing move, willing those ten days. Or it can be up to the date that their one-year probationary period is. Well, we can still say, no, they're not passing, they can study their. They stand to depend on their performance, how they're showing. But the FTO culture is designed for uncertified, too, that's the heaven engine, you know, that's your looks.
What I'm getting at here is that I've got. Three family members, all police officers. And. Two of them FTOs, Rio de Janeiro. And they still, when they come out of the academy, had to go through the field training.
That's the Rio de Janeiro police, they don't know what they did.
Okay, I'm what I'm. Okay, I'm, what I'm telling you then, we better start making some changes here, to make sure that when we put one of these guys out there. You're gonna come to me, at the counselor, or wherever I'm at. As a citizen, and tell me that we got a cop killed last night, I'm gonna be very, very upset.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just, just what I'm saying, like I said, there's nothing against you, sir.
That's why our, our policies have been updated to their part, their training, they're not just gonna be in publics. And I'm super.
Hey, now then, let's get back to. We're gonna be paying, you know, all this money. And he's. For what, the next five months? We're going to just do it. I could say sixty days, I can understand it sixty days. Is. Do I need to hear what been said, chief? I mean, no, I mean. I did, I just, probably, he'll, he'll still be in a car. With his training.
But, I'm not wrong.
Wait, I don't know. But their mother was here too, getting trained and everything too.
No, it weren't by themselves.
Yeah, they were.
No. They were never.
I passed one, going to Roswell, and pulled up beside him and waved at him, so he noticed, I know he was in a big, I said.
He managed to go in, I'll go for a medical.
I love my boy, he, he was back, today we, uh. The law went to the, the storm's up here, this. This much little flood we had, and. It was in the pickup, he went by himself. He went by himself to interact, yeah, he, I was, I don't, okay, you remember this, and, and, and I'm not trying to throw stones. But you're not getting the full story on the table to us, I'm trying to put the full story of what I saw on this in her. Kate Bockham, his sons have an issue, okay, now, I'm gonna leave it at that. This officer was to go up there with Mr. Bockham. And his grandson, to get property stuff from. The, uh. Lot of, I, I didn't get into it, didn't ask, because I've known him for thirty years, I've since been here. Man got picked up right out here, took off, and went up there, he had to, said he, he had to be up there to make sure that there was no issue, no problem. By himself. Okay, that's what, that's what I'm getting at. That man that had his butt handed to him, right there. Of this.
And his face. Well, much, so, I, I have to do myself.
Okay, now, 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 get your butt handed to you by sending a non-certified individual.
All the certification is, is a piece of paper, same we sent them to the academy. If they're gonna get their bus kicked from the street, it's gonna be myself, it's gonna be.
You're not listening to what I'm trying to say, then, chief, and what I'm trying to get at is, you're telling us that they're not in a vehicle by themselves. Trolling or driving nowhere, this man was sent up to take care of a, to mitigate a circumstance that come out of control. And he hadn't even been in no school yet, except running up down the streets and trucking somebody else or a fuck. That's what I'm getting at. By himself, and you're saying, no, they don't, no, they don't, I've seen it numerous times. Last flood we had. We pulled up in a truck, got out, went down there on Parker Lane. And, uh, I can understand it's emergency, and, and doing, doing people. Going hard in struggle. Cannot forgive that, probably. I mean, wouldn't run all down for the lights and stuff. So, wouldn't, doesn't. They have been out. Driving around, they take the vehicle home, so they are driving in a vehicle. Unless for the, with a certified police. So what happens, go off on accident? Can he legally, turn his lights on, block traffic, red traffic, by one accord?
Volunteer firefighters can do the same, I'm bound by state laws, I have to stop.
You're certified.
Yes, sir. And anybody in the, anybody in the county that wants to stop and help out an accident, there's no law saying that they can't.
Much more, I don't, I understand that, but.
Law is, is specific, is when you're taking authority protection, puts money in, or charging the price, that's what's specific.
Okay, you're giving the answer I'm under here. Yeah, but, on the other, on, on, on the other part. I'm not trying to throw you out the bus. I'm just trying to get you. And everybody else, when they come in here and they ask for something, and they tell us something. I'm taking you, that you're worth bad, what you tell me, I'm still worth gonna get bad. If you don't do what you're telling me, then I'm gonna question what you're gonna do next time. If you do it too many times, you're gonna lose my trust, and when you lose that, you've lost me. And that's all I'm saying. Thank you, I'm done.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I can. Do you have any family members that already worked in the city?
Uh, yeah, I already.
So is this gonna follow into the same thing with the contract? I think it should, but I make a motion to hold this until next meeting.
Yeah, one second, bro.
Councilor, you want?
Aye.
Councilor Proctor?
Uh.
Councilor Baker?
Yes ma'am.
Councilor Nacebuck, fine. Well, thank you.
And don't man this, nothing against you whatsoever, please don't take it that way. Yeah, we just gotta figure the contract thing out, they can have what they want, it's just, we get, and I, I don't understand where he's coming from, he's worried about y'all getting hurt. And you're not certified, that, that's, I, I understand where he's coming from. He don't want nobody hurt, nobody else does either.
I was a volunteer, years ago. For the police department here, and I had to run with an officer all the time, and I could not carry a gun either, because I was a volunteer. And, you know, it's scary out there sometimes.
Oh, yeah.
I had to stand there and watch a bunch of teenagers, and, and, well, I, you know, I wouldn't have hurt anybody anyway, but. Just being physical with them, but I was used to school once.
That's proper. Are you employed right now?
Yes.
Okay, you are. So. Stayed there for two weeks?
I was gonna do a few weeks anyway.
Really?
Well, maybe. Yeah, and I, I wouldn't say it to you, I'll talk with the deputy chief and the chief, but, um. I just have, I just have a problem with paying someone all that kind of money, you know? Get it right along, and that's, that's all we're doing, right along.
Also, they're learning, they're learning at the same time. So they're learning while they're on duty. And they should be.
Then on the yin yang on that, on practice, you know, it's, kind of the same thing.
Well, we're there, and, and, nobody's gonna work for nothing, they're learning. They're vain. We need officers.
I don't, I don't mind, I don't have a problem with being trained, they don't have a problem with riding along, but for, oh, six months.
They're working. And it's a career.
I'm, 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 I'm.
Well, part of the problem is, and we all know this, you know, the easy thing to do, just hire certified police officers. But they're not applying.
Yes, why?
Yeah.
One for me.
And.
Got two, yes.
And in behalf of, behalf of myself and the council, I'm sure. I can see that, put it down, so. Things are crazy nationwide. It's that more dangerous it's ever been for police, even elected officials. There's, uh, the crazies out there. And to be a, a, a police officer, takes a lot of courage anymore. So, where are we, Councilor Baker?
We're on it, this is all, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, um. Item E. I have directed the city attorney. To research what other municipalities concerning their judges are, are making. Uh, hoping that it would help you guys come up. I know you're very. Conscious of finances and taking care of city money, I appreciate that. I think I even said something, I appreciate that. So, uh. How do you, maybe you can help me, how do we go about this?
Uh, uh, he had a very.
Okay, and, and so then, we'll present some. And some of them are gonna be about the same size as our municipal. Okay, so, and, uh, Nan, if you would, uh, uh. Present this to the council, and, and, uh, this way they have a starting point, is the, uh, salary.
Uh, yes, mayor, so two weeks from today, I'll be prepared to present, and I'll probably send it before. Um, before Mon, before two weeks from today, uh, just so that we have plenty of time to get it on the agenda. Um, an Excel spreadsheet that details what other municipal judges are making in other jurisdictions. Um, counselor, uh, Lacewell has graciously supplied. A list of what municipal judges are making in larger jurisdictions. And I had actually already started surveying. What municipal judges are making in smaller jurisdictions, you know, about the size of Rio de Janeiro Downs. So we'll have a pretty comprehensive Excel spreadsheet that details, uh, you know, compensation. Um, probably calculates an hourly rate, and how many hours these judges are working. Um, again, they're probably full-time in the larger jurisdictions, but in the, in the. You know, five to fifteen thousand, not fifteen thousand population range, they're not full-time. So we'll put something together, I'll get it out to you within the next week, and then we can, that'll make it timely for, um, the agenda. On the, um, two weeks from today. Twenty-fifth. Ally, does that work for you?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay. I just wanna make sure that we have an, an action item, or an agenda item, um, uh, for discussion two weeks from today.
Okay, so we will have that on the agenda. For the.
For.
That, that council meeting, twenty-fifth, that what you're saying, council.
Twenty-fifth, and with, with, because it, in preparation, uh, I'd like to have a, a discussion, possible. At that time.
Discussing possible actions, yes.
Did we decide on workshop, to do these other ones? Contracts. We can decide on when.
Yeah, so you said she gonna send this, well, contract, saying, listen.
I understand that, you're saying the workshop produced to gentlemen. Remember, we decided about that.
Well, he gotta get the contract first.
The attorney's gonna drop.
Pretty awesome, but don't we need to have input and what you want her to put on that? But, especially for that phone enforcement position, where they have to stay with the physician. Every year, I'm sure it's that way in the Joe Jarvis's department, he sees someone. I'll buy my own. If you present a guy, you remember Counselor Proctor. Uh, we put in a guy in water, in water department, and they go through level one, and they have to complete level one before they're able to do level two. And so, I would see, like, to see something like that for phone enforcement, which they have to. Put in a, a year, before they transfer up and move up into a different. And that's the kind of thing we can talk about.
It's to a certain form, then they gotta get a little bit more, then they go through another school, you can't get all, both schools. In a year, and they can't go the same thing.
On, on a C S O, this woman, I'm gonna tear the shirt and put it on the road.
And it's a, that. We think, we need to see, hey, our attorney's gonna get us.
Phone enforcement, we're in the, it's both, it's here to manage, it's both.
You know, it's a process. We have to give the contract, or just the ads for it, and if we can plus enough, which is what we want, when we want, yes, right, plug it in. There's people drawing the line for it, we have to put a little gap in there. Any more, this is a march year, two years to. Take your hat for whatever.
It was.
Or you all don't take that?
I have a question for you, don't you have sample copies in Mr. Jones' game, or question, um, for the, for the.
Oh, it's a pen for, but now, yes. Yeah, let's just throw them together, we don't need, I think, it, I, I would agree with the workshops, let's get something that's, or case they were two plus.
Yeah.
We're gonna get a contract from our attorney, and we're gonna, we're gonna come, we'll follow up.
Well, he suggests that we have a workshop, and talk about what we workshop, may actually work on, what contract, which is important.
And we just get signed. Choose to see. And we challenge the court.
Okay, so y'all wanna have the workshop, and then we'll have, and put in all of our inputs, and then we'll have contact thrown in? That sound good, fine.
You all wanna do that sometime this week, or what?
Nan? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Uh, do you, do you know how long it's gonna take you to find some draft contracts?
Uh, probably a day or two, I'm, got a full schedule tomorrow, but probably Wednesday or Thursday, I could get you, uh, like, a form. Um, and I'm not, I'm not sure I heard everything correctly, I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for, but it looks like you're looking for some reimbursement. Um, contingent upon, um, or maybe no reimbursement, but just some sort of term. Um, promise to re, promise to stay on for so many years in exchange for a certain level of training, does that sound right?
Well. So, Ally can figure out, when we can have the. Deal.
She gives me the agreements, and I'll go ahead and schedule a workshop.
Yeah, Ally, I'll shoot for something by Thursday.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Find out the eighteen, if they're following.
Yeah, I do.
Uh, it depends on when she gets the contract. Get the contractors. So the eighteen is next Monday. And we have workshop, and. It's not bothering nobody on, on that Monday, is it? Would anything else I say?
Not that I want on.
But if something comes up, I, I'm just saying, if something comes up, she don't get it Thursday.
Yeah. I'll follow you.
Okay, you're talking, uh, the whole week. Let's see, if we can. Make it Thursday. Because if she don't get it here Thursday, then, then you ain't gonna get it till the next week. Okay, make it till the twenty-first then, then just put it out there, make it till the first of September, you all too, I'm just saying. No, I ain't here, I, I'm just saying, that Ally's gotta get that deal before. She can schedule. The attorney just said she bid it during the Thursday. My attorney said they was still later Thursday, too, a lot of times they get there, huh?
Here?
Okay.
I believe that's it.
Thank you, Nan.
People on the Zoom.
Thank you.
I apologize to all y'all. We just. I don't know what's wrong with the system. Sorry.